But I can call this meeting to order. It is Thursday, February 3rd, and it is our Committee of the Whole Meeting that we hold usually the first Tuesday of the month, but Tuesday was practice day, so we moved it to Thursday. So Committee of the Whole Meeting tonight, this is ISD 709 Duluth Public Schools, and we are here at the home of the Greyhounds, Duluth East, as we transition out of Hawks and our year-long or long years of being board meetings there to just different sites that are open for us. Usually it's either Duluth Denfeld or Duluth East, but we're here at Duluth East tonight, and I'll turn to Clerk Oswald for more.
Member Eater is excused. Member Kirby is excused. Member Lopper Kim?
Here.
Chair Lopoff?
Here.
Member Oswald, that's me, here I am. And Member Sadowski?
Present.
Member Sample?
Present.
Assistant Superintendent Magus?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bond?
Present.
Deputy Clerk Erickson?
Here.
HR Director Suttering?
Excuse, excuse, sorry, I did not know that before.
Secretary Bette?
Yes.
There, and the student rep are excused, we have a corner.
Thank you. And again, our Committee of the Whole Meeting is when we gather and we get a lot of information from different programs, different institutions, different communities, and tonight is no different. We have a full agenda of some incredible things going on in our district, and so I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds to introduce our first presentation, or maybe it's Cathy, CFO Erickson, with the results of the master planning document.
Thank you. Nate Bryce, are you here?
Yep, I am. Can everyone hear me okay?
Nate, I'm going to have you give a quick introduction, I think folks can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Nate Bryce. I am, I can wait as soon as I leave.
Somebody's coming up to turn up the volume, just a here, here, Nathan. Try now.
Good down?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. So, thank you, everyone. My name is Nate Bryce. I am the Development Analyst at Saturday and the Project Manager for Up the Hill Site in Duluth, working with Mark Laberty, our Director of Development, who is unable to attend tonight. So we just have a short presentation, and David Stahl from Cunningham, our Architect, is there in person, and he is going to run through that right now. So David, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and thanks for letting us present this to you. It's fun that I can actually do this in person, it's so much better. I'll be walking through very briefly the concept at its early state. This is more of an information meeting, there will be time for input, and this will evolve as things go on, but it's nice to be in the know of what's being planned at that spectacular central high site. So, how did we get to our thoughts? I don't need to tell you what a great spot it is. One, it's connected with all the good outdoor activity, so we have, as you can see, the trails, it kind of is an intersection of a lot. Next slide. Okay, the other aspect, aside from being central to all those trails and parks, obviously, it's the tip-top of the hill. So with the combination of views and those trails, we have a great opportunity, and that was kind of the, what makes it special to begin with. Here is the plan that we're hoping makes the most of the site. One quick thing I did want to point out with the height, not only is this the top of the hill for the whole city, even the site itself has a little bit of hill, so this is demonstrating how we want to keep the density toward the top and be able to look over the lower parts. Next shot. Here are the parcels, how we've divided it, dark being higher density, medium, blue, and lighter being lower density, again, keeping the dense at the top, and we wanted to make sure that there is some public aspect, a reason for those that may not live there to come. And instead of taking a park and doing it out of the part that you could develop, we thought being a hillside that cascades the view down and by the existing VOTAC building would be an excellent spot for that. Lastly, some of the roads, we wanted to work with the existing topography, this being the city that has some of the hardest rock, just inches below the dirt, keeping what we've got and using what is there is a high need. And also, there has been site work in the past, we wanted to make sure that we could use as much of that. So going to the next page, you can see the same thing with just some massing. Now, while this looks a lot like specific buildings, the idea that this is massing, just to get the idea, smaller scale, larger, medium, and larger. So, some of the directives were to not take down any of the existing denser woodland areas, so the idea was to stay out of that. Also utilizing areas that are existing flat and would, you know, be conducive to development, so on the former football field and sport track, we're building down there, but staying on those areas. Due to the topography along the edge where the north area where you come in, it's still got a lot of hills, going with smaller townhome-like developments is good because each can be on its own floor. Sites four and six, it's a slightly denser connect townhome kind of thing, and the reason works well is there is grade, those can step as it goes up the hill. And then Sites three and five, where the existing high school is, that's relatively flat because the school's already been there. It makes sense to do bigger buildings that have central hallways that need to be all on the same level, and that's where you can put the density that looks over all the rest. Notice the orientation, the idea is hopefully you can see through all of those toward the lake, and there are great views, essentially 360 degrees, but if you're up here, everyone wants to see the bridge, so we're trying to maximize that ability. So those are the various phases. We've got a couple other pictures just showing how that might feel in 3D, so if we go to the next spot. Again, not architecture yet, but massing to kind of give a sense of the scale and how this will pan out. The idea that there will be a central park, what's in it and all those details still to come, but we want an area that, even if you don't have an apartment here, this should be a great place to stop while you're biking, or to come up and again have that great overlook, so the idea is that existing VOTAC building is some type of community asset destination thing. A brewery would be great or something, but hopefully there are some other great ideas. And I think, is that the last page? Okay, we've got a couple others, this is just an example of what the view might be, and this is from the back side, and there we have from the top looking down. So, just getting started, this is the framework that hopefully will be the basis for some great conversations and further detail and development as things go.
So, Member, yep, thank you.
I like that.
I know, I'm kind of excited.
Members, Saturday Properties and their team are working with the City of Duluth to go through all of the permits and plantings and approvals, and so this is part of that first step of that master planning agreement that we had to put together, kind of that shared, what we're doing plus what Saturday and their team is doing, and that all had to be presented in one document to the city because they saw this parcel as one parcel, even though we have two separate processes, so we built this process together, so this is that portion of it. And then our hope is that Mark Laberty, who we saw back at our November school board meeting, is going to try to come to our February school board meeting again to just give another brief overview of all the things that are happening. So our hope and intention is that he'll be able to be there in person, but right now we're still confirming that for the 15th of February. So, again, this, oh, you can have some.
You can finish.
So this is just a part of our process, and wanted to make sure that you could see the component pieces here, but this is really the work of the City of Duluth and their planning and zoning team that works through all of the details. Is that fair enough to say?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes, sure.
Okay. The numbered parcel page, what do you anticipate focusing on building first, and how do you envision the progression of building, or are you going to just start on all later one time, or how is that going to materialize?
Well, we haven't discussed about which ones, just there's an ease, but I might actually hand this back to Nate, because they've had internal talks about, well, sometimes Site three looks good and then others. So, just to make sure I don't answer wrong, Nate, do you have your eyes on a specific parcel first?
Yep, so I can take that, and I believe it was a little hard to hear, but it was just about the phasing. So we anticipate, right now our first closing will be on parcels one, two, three, four, and six. So it'll be kind of one big lump, and it'll get, you know, kind of an array of all three of the product types you're looking at doing up there, right in our first closing.
And at what point do you envision being able to break ground, and when do you hope to be completed by?
So we hope by the end of this year to be breaking ground, and so that's kind of what we would call our first closing will be then, at the end of this year, and then each phase, we'll say after that, would kind of start or would close at the end of the preceding year. So it'll be about, I think there's five closings total we're anticipating.
I guess, I can ask, is this all planned as residential, or is there any commercial development in there other than maybe something mentioned in the community building?
Due to its accessibility, i.e. it's not in the way, you know, this is the destination. We did look at retail and did not find viable to have a lot of things. We do think that a destination aspect, be it a restaurant, or a taproom, or something that people actually like to go to the top of the hill and watch, would work great, but if you had other things that were more convenient, being that there's really the one main road, and they're trying to discourage that second way out because the neighborhood, they don't want all the traffic, so it is really, in essence, a one-way in and out. We didn't think that there would be a lot of retail tenants busing to get in, so it is mostly retail.
Is that going to be a deterrent to the city for getting busing to this neighborhood?
I can't.
Being if there's no commercial development or anything like that, or that's a big, that's access to me is very important, and I want to make sure that a bus route is combined up there, especially to come to our destination, because it's not very conducive to a nice long walk, I guess, for people that can't walk.
I think that we've had multiple conversations with the city and with planning and made that a priority piece for this neighborhood, and I think due to the higher level of density and potential development that's here, we think that there is a very positive, because as you watch bus routes all over Duluth, many, many are in residential areas, and I think because of the higher density here that it actually is very favorable for that discussion.
And I'm noticing that the route to get to Duluth Public Schools administration and transportation and facilities is going to go through the neighborhood. I don't see an alternative way for us to avoid that, to avoid going through a housing area. How is that going to be countered in selling houses that you don't have a lot of traffic?
Are, just to make clear, are you talking about the existing ones off to the west, or the new ones that we're proposing to build?
I'm looking at the page with the plots, and I don't see a route to get out. Yeah, that's the one, unless we're using the back way, which is not desirable.
Right.
We're going to have to go through housing, and that's my question.
And that's been known and planned all along.
And certain roads are wider and conducive to that, so some activity going through is not viewed negatively, because that is in concentrated times, beginning and end.
Feel free, anyone. I guess on the same vein of traffic, and first of all, this looks wonderful, as someone who's been on the board for a long time, it's great to see this vision in more concrete form, so, thank you. Yeah, my question was kind of around traffic studies that have been done, because this will increase traffic in that whole area, is that part of the city planning processes you go through?
Specifically looking at that intersection at the base, having worked on a lot of projects that have traffic studies specific about it, the fact that there is a long queuing potential and there is a controlled intersection, generally the concern is usually if they were to spill into areas that don't have that control and overrun existing things. So, it's planned to be done, but have done enough of these that I don't see there being a large concern, because there are a lot of safety aspects. It's teed up to handle quite a lot, so, and like I mentioned, we're going to, this secondary road is going to be discouraged to be used, there's a lot of discussion how they exactly do that, but they don't, they want everyone that lives here to pretty much go through the main entry, because of everything we just mentioned.
How many units of housing is planned in there, like how many families or however many?
I was waiting for that question, and I don't have the sheet in front of me that I'm like driving up, I'm like, oh, this is the lighter one, there's one that goes into each parcel and breaks it down. Nate, if you have access to that, otherwise we don't have.
Yeah, was it total units, is that what the question was?
Units that are on.
Oh, I believe, yeah, total units.
Yeah. 443, yeah.
443, exactly.
Exactly. Is there a population estimate to go with that, or how many people can live in those four and forty or so units?
The, almost all the townhomes are three-bedroom, so that would be more family oriented, so give yourself a 4.5 people per a typical one. The larger building, generally the people that are more interested that are singles and couples, and so that would be, you know, 1.5 times the units in those.
And are all of these going to be market rate, or is any going to be affordable, is there going to be any kind of balance?
Saturday usually does a blend, Nate.
Yep, there will be some affordability in all of these different uses. We're still working with the city just to figure out how much they want and at what percent AMI, but we can keep you updated, and actually, early next week we have a call with the city going over just that, and to Cathy's comment earlier, we are planning on being at the school board meeting, I believe it's February 15th, so we'll have some more updates for y'all then.
Thank you.
As someone that lives in a townhome community in Duluth, I'll just speak to the fact that a lot of seniors, as it downsides, they do prefer the two-bedroom units, less space to heat, less clean, and they don't necessarily like stairways. But anyway, that aside, I was just going to ask about the 37,000 square feet commercial which Member Oswald kind of referred to, so is that the amenity building, or is that somewhere else?
That is the existing VOTAC building.
So, would that be remodeled?
Yes.
And upgraded?
Extensively, I mean, the frame, the shell will remain, but the nice thing, I have been through that building, it's built tough and could do a lot of interesting things with it, including like, for instance, there's a stepped portion, it'd be nice to utilize some of that as an outdoor deck. So yes, the idea would be, the building frame is there, but extensively remodeled.
Thank you.
Yep.
I really appreciate what you've said about preserving a lot of green space and keeping a lot of the trees, and making that available for all of Duluth. I, this is kind of a silly question, but I live in a neighborhood, that was a newer neighborhood in Duluth, and we have a lot of young families, and we don't have a playground in our neighborhood, like a shared playground, and so is kind of a playground area like that set up in this development, if you're looking at attracting new families?
I, in the, there hasn't that level of detail we have not reached yet, but I agree, walkability and things to walk to and by, so I do see in that central area that activates next to that park, something like that would be a fantastic component, and useful, and a nice thing to fill out the story of what's up here. There are also other areas that won't lend themselves well to being built, but something smaller like that would fit, so I comfortably think that something like that could be included.
sample?
On that topic, thank you, Member Lopper Kim, would Saturday Property be interesting in partnering with the school district on developing that corner of the property that's now a tennis court, maybe upgrading that so it's something we could share, and maybe something in addition to a tennis court, you know, where now the picture has the, one of the pictures has the existing tennis courts and softball field there, which again is still school district property, you know, would that be something we could have conversations about?
Of course.
Yeah.
I mean, again, I think we could both benefit from that, just having facilities that would be accessible and owned by the school district, I mean, I just looked at the tennis team from this school, really isn't using tennis courts, and some of the bigger events they have, there's a necessity to have, you know, modern courts and a large number of courts to host some of the tournaments that they would like to host, but that's just one part of the topic, I guess, tennis courts.
Any amenities that benefit residents and the public? This is not a gated community by any means, we want people up, so the more amenities the better.
Pickleball's also a little popular, too, so.
Love it.
Assistant Superintendent, I'm sorry, I thought, hold on a second. I just, you went through it a little bit, but so what are your next steps with going through the city process? Can you share anything specific about that?
So for you, I think it's just, they're still waiting for some of your public approvals, and just waiting on those pieces. As far as this document is concerned, this is just the finalization of being able to share with you and the city. This is really just informational for us, but more specific for the city for them to say, yes, this is something that through all of the rules and regulations that the City of Duluth's planning and zoning has, is this something that's applicable to them? So, as a partnership and the property, we're being informed, but this is really a larger scope. Does that help?
And then that's my kind of insight, too, is that it's really wonderful that we have continued to be able to work with Saturday's Property and their partners to share in this celebration, because I really see this as a, you know, an incredible opportunity for Saturday Property and your company for bringing this project to our city and watching it really become a central part of our housing and our destination spot. So in that, and I know this is probably, Nate might be able to answer this, or it's really down the road, is working with the City of Duluth, does this project use our city's, you know, trade people and building people? I know Saturday Property from the cities, will they be working in tandem with our community? Do you know that, Nate?
Yep, so, I mean, right now, you know, it is early for that, we haven't gone out and picked a contractor and all that, but you know, like for Xena, yes, we're using trades that are up in the Duluth area, and that is our intention for this site as well.
Thank you, awesome. It's a win-win.
Sure. Now, just thinking of the first page and knowing the great mountain bike community that we have in the area, the antenna farm trail, and the group traverse, thinking about how some of the current trails are more wooded and secluded all the way through as opposed to going into more of a residential area, will those be preserved?
We're going to look at both. The ones that are woodland, we want to keep woodland, but there may be a couple of offshoots that you can take to get up in there, so interconnected, but keeping the fun ones in the fun areas, i.e. not paving them, or anything like that.
The dotted line down to Canal Park will probably be more of a one-way trail, since not a lot of people want to ride up there.
Only the most hearty.
There will be a bus that will go up.
The bus that has the bike front.
Thank you, thank you.
Any more questions for David or Nate? Thank you, Nate, for being here virtually, thank you for being here tonight, and we look forward to having Saturday Properties here again on the 15th to provide a larger overview. So, if you have any specific questions after seeing this, after you've noodled it, please email me and I'll get it to the right folks. So thanks again for letting us give you an update.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll say.
Thank you, Nate.
I'll go to our next item. Our next item is just a quick reminder regarding our School Resource Officer update. Again, it's going to occur this coming Monday from 5 until 8 o'clock, it's going to be at Fickers, so we are encouraging everyone to please RSVP if you are planning on attending our School Resource Officer presentation at Fickers, again, this coming Monday from 5 until 8 o'clock.
And you do, you want board members to RSVP?
We will take, yes.
Okay, okay.
Just to be certain.
Okay, perfect, thank you for that clarification.
Good food will be provided. Our next item is a presentation.
She's going to get her ready.
No problem. And while we're getting it ready, did you want to provide any kind of introduction, Mrs. Lopper?
That would be great. Thank you all for being here today, and I hope that you had a chance to look at some of the tabling that was downstairs. Donette and Sebo, Principal Sebo, had gotten her CTE team together in order to provide some student work, and there were some gifts, obviously you picked up the gift on the way, it was a little miniature hawk, if you can see it, yep, right there, right there, so if you didn't get one, Donald Simons is our engineering teacher who created those, and he would be happy to get you one. So we're here today because February is CTE in the schools month, and we want you to have an understanding of CTE and Perkins, and all these things work together to provide wonderful career opportunities for our students. We have students that get certifications in different areas, and they can earn credits, and they have articulation agreements with universities, and so we have a lot of benefits for programming that we have in Duluth Public Schools. How long do I need to tap dance?
Thirty more seconds.
Thirty more seconds. One thing I would like to note is that in the past two years, and yep, we've been through the pandemic, we have functioned our CTE, kind of organized it through more of a committee. Years ago, we had a couple of different people that had a 1.0 FTE, that all their work was done around CTE, but we have been functioning differently, and graciously, Principal Sebo, in all of her spare time, let me tell you, she has none, and I do not know how she does this, she's kind of a superwoman here, she has taken on the role as the administrator for CTE programming. She works with the teachers from both sides. We do have a coordinator, a teacher coordinator that is working under the curriculum office as well, we have Don Simons from the Eastside Town, and Andrew Gunderson from the Denfeld School. So we have a team of us that work together, and we've also pulled in Anna Kock into the conversations into the team, too, so that is our CTE team, and it looks like she's almost there. I'll switch phones if you want me to do that and you do this?
Sure. All right.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, hello, everyone.
Welcome to East.
Thank you.
I have Invisalign, just like the 90% of high school kids, it makes my mouth really dry, so I'm sorry, I have to drink some water. Years, in years past, we've had a almost full-time career technical education coordinator. As the consortium has grown, so has that portion of the position, and as of a year and a half ago, the Duluth portion of that career tech ed coordinated position was dissolved and added as a stipend to principals. Last year, Marsha Nelson at Denfeld and I shared this position, Marsha took a job in Virginia, here I am. I have a lot of background in current technical education, I came from Iron Range Schools prior to this, which is a really strong consortium with a whole lot more money to work with thanks to the mines, but in that consortium, the principals take a really active role. So I serve as the president of our current consortium board, our consortium was the Lakesphere Consortium. This year, we added the Carlton Plus Two, which is another 11 schools, so we are now a massive consortium, and I'll talk about what that is in a minute. But what our goal is tonight is just to give you a pie in sky overview of what career and technical education is in the high schools, what its funding streams are, and what we currently have in Duluth Public Schools. I'm not going to read every slide to you, but there's a lot of information on them should you want them. Our goals as a group this year and last year... Uh, our goals as a group this year and last year, um, in addition to having a principal as the coordinator, we also have curriculum specialist, that curriculum specialist role now. Don Simons is an engineering teacher here at East. Hi, Don. He was that position last year. This year, we added, when, when Marsha left, we needed a voice at Denfeld. Andrew Gunderson was hired in that position there. So we're kind of a team of three. We meet with Jen and Anna Kaka, the secondary curriculum person monthly, and then we meet as a group, a full group monthly as well. There's a lot of paperwork and processes that go with career and technical education that other departments don't have to contend with. So we're gonna get rolling. Go ahead, Jen. Thank you. Perkins Five is in its first full year of implementation. So this is the fifth go-round of that federal legislation around career and technical education funding. Perkins Five is slightly different. We're all learning the ropes as we go. We just completed our comprehensive local needs assessment as a consortium. That really drives our funding goals and our goals for the programs across the consortium. Perkins Five is really about strengthening those programs that connect student experience with local employer needs, not just statewide, but regionally. We look at that. Uh, we have really great connections with our local college systems, particularly our technical colleges, uh, community colleges. And then, um, one of the things that I think you're gonna see Duluth really focus on is some really clear pathways. So if this is a career area that interests you, here's what you can do in high school to get you started. Here's some job experiences you can try while you're in high school, some internships. Uh, we incorporate a lot of field trips and a lot of those things, but we definitely have work to go for individual student experiences in high school. And then from there, we're gonna send you off with a leg up in college via articulated credits or transcripted credits. Um, and a really great connection there. So we'll get, we'll get to that some more too. Thank you. So the consortium model, I mentioned that we're now a very big consortium. Minnesota uses the consortium model to manage its Perkins grants and funding. And so it's a collaboration of schools. There are consortium coordinators that help keep their eye on the pie for all of us. They are that connection with the state. Superintendents will hear from our consortium coordinators. School boards will have presentations from them. In our Lake Superior Consortium, we have a secondary and a post-secondary. And the post-secondary coordinator's job has blurred a little bit as we welcome that Carlton group in. She's really working closely with those high schools as well. Uh, I think that's all I needed to say about the consortium. So we work together as a consortium of schools. We don't make decisions in isolation about the Perkins pieces of funding that support IST 709's current tech ed. So Leah Vatt, who's a teacher in Lake Superior Schools, um, is our northern school secondary coordinator. They have Fridays off, which gives her a great time to come visit the sites, support the staff in all of those districts. Jill Murray, uh, was hired by Lake Superior College. She is the second, post-secondary coordinator. Um, and then as we welcome those southern schools, the Carlton plus two, we knew they would need some help joining the consortium. They hadn't had the same structures or a lot of structures. And so we added some time for Jill to support them as we merge.
What does plus two mean? Carlton plus two?
Uh, it's the Carlton County plus two schools that aren't the county.
Gavin Gregor.
That's just what they called them.
Gavin Gregor and Carmel White are actually not in Carlton County, but they get added in all the time in Carlton actually just because of proximity. I work with them.
Just a regional thing.
Yeah.
So yes, good question. I didn't explain that. So as you can see here, these are all of the schools that are now in our consortium. Lake Superior College is our sole post-secondary partner at the moment. The consortiums on the range have a couple there. Lake Superior has really been our strongest connection here too. But we do partner with some other programs in articulation agreements. Career and technical education in Minnesota has some really specific elements that approved programs have to have. You can read through these later, but these are the things that we are always watching for and trying to strengthen within our programs. So standards of curriculum, uh, there are partners at the state that work with our instructors. There are partners that are local colleges that work with our instructors to make sure that we're aligned with what business and industry is going to need. Uh, and what our colleges are expecting of those students when they come out and go into those certificate and degree programs. An integrated network of partnerships with business and community members. We have some phenomenal, uh, business partners in this community that support our programs. I think in the later slide, we talk about our advisory boards. And each approved program has a local advisory board that is made up of business members and experts in the community that meet to support our staff as they plan, as they talk through the equipment that they have or that they need. Training our instructors might need, um, the most recent one I sat on, I don't know if you went downstairs and met Lorelei, the auto instructor from Denfeld. Lorelei was the tech tutor in that program and was convinced that she'd be a phenomenal instructor. She's amazing. Her advisory board is so supportive of her, making sure she has training that she needs, sending experts from among them into those programs to show kids skills that she might not have access to. Those advisory boards are just a really key piece of our current tech ed programs. And the support of our local business and, and community partners is a really key aspect. Core sequencing and credentials. As we work through program approval processes, each program should have a really targeted progression. We should start with some entry level introductory courses and finish out in some really specialized, I think this is what I want to do. I really want to dig in and learn more about it. Don's program is a great example. Um, when you see the volume of courses within that program, the goal is really to give kids some of those more individual, really specific experiences. So it looks like we have a ton of classes running, but there might be four or five stacked on top as those students are working through some of those really high-level experiences. So core sequencing, career connected, we work a lot with community partners and business and industry and our college partners to make sure we're getting kids ready for the careers that are in high demand in our area. We, we send them out into the community. One of our biggest events, uh, district-wide, we send all of our 10th graders to Construct Tomorrow every year. It's supposed to come back. We just pushed it into May. May 11th, if you want to come. It is a, it is really an incredible experience for our 10th grade students. We send them all. And then there's another time slot where we send some of our advanced students who want to spend more time with those. The trades unions are there. Uh, they bring equipment for kids to try. It's really, it's really fun. Um, so we do try and give some of those really introductory level experiences to our students to then encourage them to try a program, uh, and, and see if it's a good fit. Work-based learning is one of the things you're gonna hear really stressed in Perkins Five, and it is an area where Duluth has a lot of room that we need to grow. We don't have a lot of work-based learning experiences. COVID didn't help. Um, but we will be working on beefing those up quite a bit. Data collection for improvement and advocacy is a key feature. It's part of that comprehensive needs assessment that we do. You'll see that in some of our specific consortium goals. We rely on the data and we watch the data. So when we target, uh, growing a program for a special population, for example, males in the healthcare professions. That's not a traditional population. We, we, we make stress efforts to reach out to them, encourage them to start in the program. We have had women in welding programs come through. So some of those. And then, uh, other special populations are, are students with barriers in any way. You'll see that as one of our goal areas too, uh, in helping make sure that we provide access and encourage those students. Uh, I think I'm good there. I think I covered everything. Thank you. So components of programs of study, POS is what we refer to, uh, as a, as a full program of study. To be an approved program by the state and to qualify for that federal and state funding, there are some components that you need to have in general. It's a Department of Education-approved CTE program. There's a lot of classifications with them. You're gonna see the whole wheel in a minute. A Minnesota State College system academic program equals the potential for a program of study. Next slide. In Minnesota, we also have seven minimum criteria required, uh, to be approved as a program of study. So those are on the next slide. I've talked about most of these. We have to be aligned. We have to identify and consistently meet with our, uh, net, network of partners. We have to make sure all those MD program approvals are met from a fully credentialed teacher to the core sequencing, to our connection to their college level. The post-secondary academic program has to meet the Minnesota State Board and Higher Learning Commission requirements. If you aren't familiar with the Higher Learning Commission, they are the ones who come in and credential our college systems. Their, uh, slightly connected headache is the credentialing of our college and the schools teachers. We do have one college in the schools CTE program as well, which is healthcare. Uh, but that means that our high school level teachers that offer college in the schools credit right here under our roofs at East and Denfeld and AEO have to be fully credentialed to offer those same credits as their college partners do. And that's tough. If you're only teaching one section of psychology or one section of, um, sociology is the next one. You have to have a master's in that field or a master's plus 16 credits, specific to that. So we're all struggling to navigate that. But that's why you might have heard of the Higher Learning Commission in recent history as we all panic about continuing to be able to offer CITs courses. Materials, equipment, and resources. You're gonna hear about this a lot. These programs are phenomenally expensive to maintain. We have to maintain, uh, industry-level equipment. So running a 40-year-old lab is probably not industry-level. Um, it's tough to support them. They are, they are equipment-heavy. They are consumable material-heavy. And not a lot of those costs can be written into that federal grant. Districts have to sustain those. We find a lot of creative ways to do that, but, uh, as, as Mr. Simons will tell you, there's equipment in that lab that needs a computer to run it. And as you know, we're working on updating those computers, but in some cases, uh, we're, we're just behind. So, um, we need to be really clear about what we need in those programs so that we can then be clear about what kind of funding we really need and then really successfully plan for how much we can run.
Can we get them donated through some of the partnerships in the community we have? Or is there anything of that with the grant?
Yes. So, uh, our, our local partners have donated equipment in the past. Slightly used sometimes, but yes, that is historically a way that, that career tech ed programs get, um, equipment. It's always a, a potential and a possibility for sure. All right. Um, work experiences, we've talked about that too. We hope to really start to boost that with Perkins Five's stress on that and with COVID going away. It'll be easier to get our students out to, into those community experiences and work-based experiences. And then I did talk about our comprehensive local needs assessment. That's where we look at data related to who's taking courses in these programs, their success in those programs, uh, the teachers that we have, and then the experience and the knowledge about those programs. We survey students and staff and administrators within the consortium to really be able to set some goals and target things. So the CL, C, L, and A, I just spoke about a little bit. It takes a deep dive into what our programs are and where we want them to be, and then we set some goals to get there. So I'm not gonna dig into those too much. The Lake Superior Consortium, which was all of those schools you saw at the beginning, we look at data from all of those schools, from the programs we offer, uh, to the number of students and the types of students taking them. We look at a lot of demographic information. These are the seven goal areas that we've set. So as we write our grant for this next go-round, this is where our instructors will be encouraged to focus their funding requests. So Mr. Simons, for example, do you have a piece of equipment you think you're gonna want? He said, yeah.
Are these in priority?
These are the priority. So if.
Is number one the top priority or do I?
No, no, no. Um, they're just our seven, uh, areas. So focusing on marketing, building awareness of CTE programs, one of the things we realize in our comprehensive needs assessment is that students don't know what that program is, or that it is a pathway, or the breadth of what they can do, or what is an articulated credit. And so in order for them to say, yep, I know about that. Yes, I took that. Or yes, that's something that's interesting to me. They, they need to know what it is and how it functions. Uh, healthcare and manufacturing are our identified regional needs. These are the highest wage, highest demand in our region, and so that's a focus area for us to work with all of those partners to start to supply that workforce. We have a lot of really interesting creative ideas floating around. I don't know if anyone talked to, Nathan Globely, the principal at the, uh, ALC and AEO. There's some really great opportunities for some partnerships with LSC for those programs that we'll be exploring too. So focusing there, uh, work-based learning, I talked about. It is required that 5% of our consortium's basic allocation go towards work-based learning. Uh, collaboration between disciplines or schools. We've had a little bit of that historically. There are students from neighborhood schools who will come if we have room in our healthcare occupations class, for example. Students from Proctor or Herman Town might come down for some sheer tuition. And so there is a little bit of that, more so in the smaller schools. We're, we're a pretty big district. We, we sustain our own programs pretty well through enrollment all on our own. But smaller schools really work together to maintain and sustain. Special populations, I talked about. 10% of the consortium's basic allocation has to go towards recruiting and supporting students in those special, uh, populations. Any kind of a barrier, whether it's limited English proficiency, economically disadvantaged, students who are homeless in foster care. It does include parents who are on active duty. Students with disabilities are included in there. We are Perkins, one of Perkins Five components is to really focus on supporting those students in our CTE programs. Math and reading have always been a part of Perkins. How are we using what we have and using the really high engagement, high hands-on environments that CTE programs create to boost math and reading skills? And then, uh, I could say this about every single position, but recruiting and retaining career and tech ed teachers is a unique thing. We are typically pulling these adults out of industry where they're making really good money and asking them to work with high school students in the craziness that we know public education is. We're, we're helping them be trained to be teachers. That's not what their background is or their training is. And so it's just a unique group to get and maintain licensure for and then to support as they enter this profession with us. So recruiting, retaining, uh, and training CTE educators is increasingly challenging. There are college programs that, that train them. They are decreasing rapidly. So a lot of these aren't even offered as full certifications for teachers anymore. So we're all fighting over them. So on your way up today, tell Mr. Simons what a great job he's doing. We have, we have to keep them. So funding for CTE at the district level comes from three pots of money, and I wish she was here to tell you more about it. Um, cause I'm sure she could give a spontaneous lecture on, uh, CTE levying. But the federal grant covers some very, can cover some very specific things. There's only so much money to go around and there's only so much money allocated to the consortium. So the consortium board, which has a leader from every single school, has to narrow down what we're gonna use those grant funds for. Uh, there's always some adjustment during the year and so some money might pop. Like we couldn't do field trips last year. We had a lot of money to turn over and use for equipment, which was hard to find and hard to get and hard to ship. But, um, so the, the Perkins funding is very specific. It can't be used to sustain a program. We can't use the Perkins funding, that federal grant funding, to continue to pay for the SolidWorks software that we need for our engineering classes, the Adobe Photoshop software that we need every year for graphic arts, the books that, that Ms. Olson's healthcare class needs. Those year-to-year things, once we start a program, we have to be able to sustain it. You can levy for a portion of, uh, up to 35% of expenditures from fully licensed and certified staff. So we have to make sure we've crossed all those Is and dotted those Ts and their licenses ready to go for the year. We can also levy for a part of the supplies that we use. So the cleaner and clearer we can be about tracking those and reporting those, which is one of our goals right now, uh, the better we are able to levy for a portion of them. And then what's left has to come from general funds. So I mentioned the expense of the equipment and supplies of those courses. By nature and for safety and, and just the limited equipment, they are much smaller class sizes than most of our programs. We have typically pretty large class sizes here at East. Those have to stay at really low numbers. Uh, in our computer labs, for example, there's only 30 machines. I can't put 38 kids in an engineering or graphic arts class. In the healthcare occupations class, it's limited to how many beds and how many we can get certified in one semester. So that's an even smaller number. We, we backfill with a lot of general funds, um, but without the extra supports, it makes that really challenging. So. What are Duluth's programs of study? So one of the things that I, I've talked about is just the, the clarity we're trying to get to. Um, when you have one coordinator who just manages that in isolation, they become the magic behind the screen. That was not the right Wizard of Oz analogy.
I follow it.
But, but, but Brad Vies, Jim Art before him, they, they were like hamsters on a wheel, just making sure everything worked. MacGyver, I could throw out a lot of analogies, um, but they just kept, you're moving the money around and trying to keep those programs afloat. and trying to keep those programs afloat as they go. As we get bigger and our programs expand and our consortium expands, we need to just be really clear and transparent about what each program really costs to run so that we don't hit a year like this year where we added five sections of interative foods that cost a minimum of $4,500 apiece per semester in supplies. They have to buy food to cook for the curriculum. We added those because kids requested them. And then we suddenly had to find a ton of money for the supply budget. And there's only so much to go around. So the clearer we can be ahead of time, the instructors have worked really hard to identify what is a realistic supply budget? What's the minimum that I can get away with and run this course? So what does it really cost to run a semester of interactive foods? What does it really cost to run a semester of CAD for architecture? The construction class? How many students can we put in it? The clearer we can be about that, the better we can plan ahead of time. So we don't hit a fall where Adobe's not on the computers yet and the teachers aren't licensed yet. And it was kind of this perfect storm of craziness. But what you're going to see now is what the instructors have been working through with me about that level of transparency so that when the principals and district staff work to, after registration, to schedule and budget and really be intentional about this, we know we have the money to sustain the programs we've scheduled. So in Duluth Public Schools, I'm going to show you my career wheel. I live for color coding and spreadsheets. You can't see this really clearly, but they are color-coded. So blue is human services. Maroon is health, science, and technology. Orange is engineering and manufacturing. Purple is arts, communications, and information. Green is agriculture, food, and natural resources. And orange is business management and administration. We are unique in that we have them all. Most of the smaller schools in our consortium have one or two. And so we're really proud to say that we have something for everything. And I'm going to show you, I'm going to walk you through them one at a time. So in agriculture is our forestry, fish, and wildlife program, plant science, and then a new one-hour course. So someday I'd like to take you on tours of our facilities at East and Denfeld because I want you to go see the greenhouse. I want to walk you through the school forest, the new greenhouse room at Denfeld. It's not really a greenhouse. We bought some equipment and made it that. But in order to run a two-hour block, if we can only offer it at one site, for example, there's no school forest at Denfeld, so we can only offer forestry, fish, and wildlife here, it has to be in a block so both campuses can send students. This causes a lot of work for transportation, for scheduling, for counselors, for the students, and it really limits who can take it. So if you're a student who thinks you want, that you want four years college bound, you're also taking a foreign language, you might be taking an art or a music, and in a six-period day, there's not a lot of room for a block. So we're really limiting who can take those courses when we run them in the block. So finding one-hour options is critical as we try to grow those programs. So we have the forestry, fish, and wildlife block here at East. They went ice fishing this year. They go up to Hot Ridge. They take some great field trips. And then they also work in our school forest. Did they say we have an outdoor classroom? It's amazing. I don't know if you know this or not, but we have a nesting pair of eagles on the property that I think caused the district some headaches during the red plant.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
They're here. If you come to a football game, you can watch them in and out. Anyways, great facilities here. And then we have a gorgeous greenhouse up on the roof at East, which offers some really unique experiences for our students as well. We have a plant sale in the spring. That's how they raise money and kind of sustain that program. So that's plant science and greenhouse, one and two. This is one of those courses I was talking about that we stack. So if you're taking another year of this, you're in there with the Level One students. You're doing more advanced work. So these teachers are typically running more than one class within that hour.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, I interrupted. Why is the Denfeld class 0.5 credit and the East class 1.5?
So this is that one semester, the one-hour block. It's been on, it's been in the catalog for a long time. We've been running it this way because having a lopsided block makes running a program difficult. But this year, they had enough students at Denfeld to run some programs there. So we've been running the block here, which is a different course. So we still have to run it as a block.
Okay.
Denfeld added this just this year. There's two sections of it. So we had to get some equipment for her, the grant to help pay for that.
Is that why the money difference, the cost per second?
Yes. Yep, yep. So just equipment-wise, she has some stacked growing trays. He's got a greenhouse. So it's just a very different set of equipment that needs. Hi, screen. Thank you. And the engineering and manufacturing, we have aerospace physics on both sides. Hamilton Smith is now full-time at AEO ALC. He helped us get this program up and running, Aaron Somala did. This course is unique in that it also meets the physics requirement. Students are required to take either a full year of chemistry or physics to graduate from a Minnesota high school. This meets that class in a really hands-on way. And it continues to grow. So right now at East, you can see the numbers. We have 75 students taking aerospace physics this year, 26 at Denfeld. Some of the differences you see really don't have a lot to do with what the program is. It's about the popularity of it. Word spreads, things grow. It's just kind of one of those unique things when you have different sites. So aerospace physics, they do some really incredible things in those programs. You'll see them out flying planes on the football field in the spring. We have wind tunnels. It's cool. So that's a new one. That's unique in the aerospace cluster, science and math. You can go to the next one, please. Also in there is our automotive program, which is bigger than we can sustain. We can only run one auto program. That is at Denfeld, and so it remains in a block. We fill those classes and then some. We have automotive basics, brakes and engines, transmissions and suspensions, and then the advanced class. And you'll see that's, I didn't mention that, but not all are open to all grades. The reality is when they're full and we can't put all the kids in, when we start a waitlist, it's seniors down. So even though you'll see that this is open to ninth graders, it's a rare ninth grader who gets a spot in that class. And this is just a note that there's an additional cost here of the software to run the diagnostics on vehicles. That's just the overall cost for the program right here. So you'll see some of those. It looks like a pretty inexpensive program, but there's definitely some cost-related. For example, we now have to pay for repairs for the lifts. I'll talk about repair budget in a minute. I talked about articulated credit. So there's a difference between articulated credit and transcripted credit. Articulated credit is an agreement with that college. So our students who successfully complete these auto programs can go to LSC and have credits sitting waiting for them in those courses. Sometimes the college will have our students take those courses again just to make sure they're on the same page, but they're free. So that's an articulated credit. It's specific to that college. So LSC, and I know it's not called WITC anymore, but it still is in our handbook, our course catalog. So there it is. So we have agreements with both LSC and WITC for our auto students to go there and already have the first round of classes done. And then another aspect of Career Tech Ed is a technical skills assessment. And so in many programs, it should be an all, we're getting there, there's certification and credentialing benchmarks along the way. And so our automotive students take the ASE entry-level certification tests. You'll see some other tests along the way. Mr. Simons had, I'm going to keep picking on you because you're standing there looking at me, had some certifications for, as a sample on his table, that students can take that will make them more hireable. They will have to do that then to become part of that program they enter or the career field they enter. It'll make internships and work experiences different for students who pass those benchmarks to. So that's the automotive certification. We have a business and marketing program on both sides of campus. Neither one has a license. Both have social studies teachers that we got tiered license. And so they're, we're trying to talk them into working on it. This year, for the first time in a long time, we have a full-time business instructor back at East. The demand has been there, but we've been sharing one teacher. This year, we just, I couldn't take 70 kids out of business. So we hired full-time here at East. So you'll see those. They're kind of growing now. It's like I said, we have new teachers. Whether they stick with the program, we'll see. They kind of merge with instructors.
Yep. Isn't that 100 students at Denfeld with only two sections means there are 50 kids in each class, each section?
Or they didn't all get in. That was registration work. Yep, yep. Sorry, thank you.
I was about to.
There's probably a waitlist of a good many of them. Yep. It's also possible I have section numbers wrong I was doing this.
Okay, good to know.
I decided my copy and paste wasn't clean enough, so I had to rebuild them all on the screens. Okay. These are the articulated credits available for business just with LSC. There's a couple of courses up there, Principles of Marketing and Personal Finance. That one's still pending. Will remain pending until we have fully credentialed instructors and continue with our program and pathway. We do have a couple of programs. We typically have only run one in the human services field. It's an early childhood course. Our instructor is on leave. So we had kids request. We're running the child development child site, but it's running as a psychology course through social studies on both sides right now. It's not a career and tech ed course without that instructor there.
Just a quick question. Heard today about some new funding through the state for increasing teacher preparation, teacher pathways. So that would probably fall within this, this area if we were to pursue.
It would. This is one of those programs that needs to be updated. Right now, all we had was early childhood. And so if we're talking teacher prep, that's a much bigger, our pathways to teaching course, which is different, it's not career tech ed. But that's one of our grow-your-own programs. But yes. And the construction, this is another year where I just couldn't justify taking so many kids out of construction and sticking them on a waitlist. So we have a full-time construction program. It's actually an overload when you teach three blocks. Most teachers teach five. They're forced to teach six because they're flies. Challenges with this program, we partner with LSC. You'll see that in some articulated credit in a minute. But that means we go to the LSC site where they're building, which is a phenomenal experience for our kids because they get to see all of those different levels working with college students who are building that house. The house is way out in, I don't know, Lakewood. I can't get kids out there in a block and back again. And we had a bus shortage. So this year, they're finding smaller projects closer, which has kind of been scrambled. We do have facilities here at East for the construction program with a lovely giant garage bay where they could and should be building a shed when it's 40 below, building something. However, there's a really big brick pillar right outside the garage bay door that we need to deal with. Nothing's coming out of that door right now. So construction tech has always had all three levels typically running at the same time. We do have students who take all three levels. This year, we've been able to spread it out because we had so many students request. This is the articulated credit, again, through LSC for construction. I don't need to go through all of those. And then the certification, they, the students right now, I think this will expand if we continue to be able to offer full-time and really robust levels one, two, and three. Right now, they take a safety and pollution training. It's called SP2 for the construction certification. All of those students take it as they enter the class. That's what deems them ready to go out to the job site safely. I mentioned there was a lot. There's a lot. So this is where you see that they're stacked. That means that they're running either multiple together or on top of another one based on where the student could fit it and where the instructor thought they could run multiple curriculums in the same hour. So engineering is one of those programs where we've really advanced and had kids stick with us all the way through. And they need now more advanced programs. Rather than calling it an independent study, the engineering instructors really wanted to reflect what the skill they were working on. So it showed on their transcript as weldments, as manufacturing technologies three. So those are on here. You'll see some odd costs around, but because they're stacked, it makes it a little hard to budget. We know that for some of these, here's the money we need. Mostly in consumables when they're building and manufacturing things. 3D printers cost money to run that. John has got some really cool equipment down there. So you really need to go on a tour at some point. And then at Denfeld, we have welding facilities. We don't have them here at East yet because we have ventilation issues that we need to navigate. But we are going to work on getting welding facilities here at East as well. Articulated credit available for engineering, the prototyping processes, and advanced manufacturing tech. Again, because that has welding built within it, it's at Denfeld only at the moment that that articulated credit comes from. Our students moving through those engineering programs can get certification in SolidWorks, which is the program they use to design. So there's a lot of them. And we do have students that will go through multiple and pass multiple certifications as they go. In our graphic arts program, that is both at East and Denfeld, we share one instructor and one tech tutor. So we've grown as far as we can grow there at the moment. But we do have facilities on both sites. There's a lot of equipment in both of those. Again, I'll take you on a tour someday. But graphic arts students at the beginning level work with Adobe software, learning how to create and modify digital art. And then they're actually creating products as they go through. We have screen printers here. We have poster makers, vinyl cutters. I know they had some things down there. Jen Miller is the instructor. She had an appointment today with her tech tutor. Brian was here. So hopefully you got to see some of those things. I'll also call up there and say, "I need this design. Do you have a student who can do it?" And it just gets done. So our commencement tickets were designed by an East senior. Our hound pounds, posters for the building, all kinds of things come out of that program. The healthcare sciences, this is our college-in-the-schools program. And I'll show you the difference between credits in a minute. Again, we have one instructor that we have to share. We've grown as big as we can grow. Classes are folders, waitlists. So Kim Olson teaches medical occupations in a block first semester on both sites. And then CITs, interdisciplinary nursing and home health, second semester in a block on both sites. We trade off for the one-semester emergency medical responder course that students take. So this semester, I think it's at East. Next semester, it goes to Denfeld. And then she runs around in between. Right now, she's in the process of hauling all the CPR dummies from one site to the other. So if we go to the next one, this one has both articulated credit and dual enrollment. When a class says CITs, a college-in-the-schools, it means that teacher is fully credentialed to offer college credit. And students leave here with college credit on a transcript from Lake Superior College that they could take to UMD, they could take to whatever college that will take that transcripted credit. Articulated credit is the one that's specific to that college you go to. You can't take it anywhere else. So because Kim is a fully credentialed and works closely with the college, we offer both here. Restaurants, food, and beverage services. This is another one that's really phenomenally challenging through the pandemic. And it's really tough to offer in block classes. Particularly at East, this was an incredibly expensive program. It wasn't designed to run as a restaurant. So when I take you on a tour one day, you'll see that the foods classroom is way over here. Across from it is a prep kitchen. In the next chunk of the building, on the other side of what used to be a pool, there's another prep kitchen where they actually got the food ready to go out into the restaurant, which is in the office area, which meant that a second door has to be open and unlocked and unmanned. And 70, mostly senior citizens would come for lunch every day. If you've ever tried to park at East at 11 o'clock during the day, you know that that was a challenge. So as our request numbers got smaller, we were running classes of about seven that required three adults to run it. One has to be in this kitchen, one has to be in that kitchen, and one has to be front of house, which just wasn't sustainable. Denfeld runs a deli that serves to students. And then their club also caters. Both, both sides did some catering. Whether we try and build back at East as a deli that's just self-contained during the pandemic, it didn't make sense for us to bring, we couldn't have brought them in. And then also sustaining that model with how spread out we are, with three paid adults, just isn't something that we can continue. So we have to rework this. We'd love to build in more of those single-hour classes. I mentioned this one earlier. Get packed. But then I also have to provide five grand a section to feed the kids who are cooking in there all semester. So we have some growth needed here. We just need to get creative around how we're doing those program approvals, but wow, is there a demand for people in those fields here. So I think we're almost at the end, but what do we need as a district? We need some realistic supply budgets. So rather than trying to play the money shuffling game and agibber it every year, if we can be clear ahead of time about how much money we need to run each section, we know the budgets we have to work with. The district has been great about supporting needs that pop up, but that's not sustainable. So if we can be clear and transparent, we know what we're working with, we know what we will need year to year, we won't be panicking mid-year too often. Staff support, posting early to meet requirements. When we don't have fully licensed teachers, there's a timeline that a job has to stay open for. This means that all those people we pulled out of industry to hire and are on a tier-one license are laid off for 90 days while we repost and try to find somebody fully certified. I can guarantee them, I can promise them all, they're going to get that job again, but they're sitting without a job for 90 days. The earlier we can do that process, the earlier we can help them through the paperwork needed for credentialing, helping them get to that tier-two level and getting the training they need to keep moving up to be fully licensed teachers so they don't have to do that all the time is another area that we need to help with. And then repair and replacement budgeting. Everybody in this room has probably heard one of us panic about that. We had a big piece of equipment go down at, I haven't talked about middle school because it's technically not a part of Perkins and High School CTE, but we do have theater programs there that need equipment and need supplies. Same thing, we have to budget ahead of time. We had a piece of equipment go down that's required for curriculum at Lincoln Park this year. And again, thankfully, the district found us some money to pay for it. But if we can start building up our repair and replacement budget, we know that the huge cooler is going to go out at some point at Denfeld and the deli. We know that at some point, we're going to have to replace an oven here. So we just need to build a bit of a cushion there to be better prepared for repair and replacement as part of the curriculum support for this program. And then I think this is my last slide. Career technical education works. You all know this. You've heard about it forever. Students who participate in these programs have higher graduation rate. They walk out of high school and college faster and making more money than a lot of their four-year college counterparts. They're incredibly high-demand positions, they're great wages, and they're doing things that these kids are really passionate about. So if we can connect all those dots for them, it's magic. I cut off some of the slides, you can actually read it, but the picture on the bottom of an example is actually a student from Proctor who helped us with our Women in Welding program, who's in, they're getting recruited out of high school to go work. So we are very proud of the programs we have. We're trying to be really efficient and clear so that we're better poised to grow them as far as we can. We only have so many staff and so many rooms to work with, but these are really high-demand programs for us, both at Denfeld and East and increasingly now through ALC and ADEO. I think that was my last slide.
It was. Thank you.
How did I do? Questions for me?
You did great. So I'll, first of all, I'll say thank you, Chris Sebo, for not only his presentation, but then also setting up this afternoon with you and your team, and I'm still here. So I just want to thank all of you for all of your hard work, and so let's give them. I mean, this is important work. We all know, I mean, I serve as one of the members on the Workforce Development Board, and we all know there's a lot of opportunities for students to enter into, you know, careers of their choice, and it is really important for our school districts to figure out ways to really support those students. It's not just about college anymore. It is definitely about, you know, helping kids, you know, identify a career, and if they need to go to college, whether it's technical college or, you know, four-year college, great. But a lot of opportunities begin in high school, and they can come out and make some. So really, it's not just about the money, but they can really make up.
Find something you love and then find a way to use that to support the lifestyle you want, so, yeah, yes.
So thank you. So I'll take questions.
Yeah, hi, Danette. Thank you. This was a wonderful presentation, and it's just been as a, someone who's seen the growth of our programs over the years, and both as a parent as well as a school board member, it's really just very exciting to see how it's all came together and grown in many different ways and the partnerships in the community. It was great talking to the teachers down there, too. I guess a couple of things. One, just on a personal note, my daughter took the aerospace class, one of the first years of it, and when she did go to go college shopping, she, people were just so impressed that she had that class, and I was so proud to say we offered it. But how can we help let parents know more about these classes? And how is that?
Yeah, I think that one of our goal areas as a district in the next couple of years is to clearly lay out some of our pathways. They exist, we're just not clear about it. And that's not just career tech ed. If you're passionate about music, what do we offer for that? So being clear about what those pathways are and highlighting then what those courses are. Right now, when we publish a course catalog, it's alphabetical and it's kind of all over. So if we can help with a clearer pathway and then help really intentionally check in with kids over the years, welcome to ninth grade. What do you think you want to do? Let's learn about some of this. Let's adjust it before you register for 10th grade. None of us, well, I shouldn't say that. Raise your hand if you're doing right now what you thought you were going to do when you were 14. You told me I was going to be a high school principal. So it's really about exploring, and then when you find your passion, how can we help enhance that and grow that? And so this, along with a lot of our programs, how do we showcase what that means? What is CAD for architecture? What is plant science greenhouse? We've lost a lot of those opportunities through the pandemic. We want you to be here. We want to walk you into the graphic arts labs so you could see what that is and what it looks like. We want to show you what you've got to see downstairs, a little bit of that. There are clubs and activities, competitions attached to all of our approved programs as well. So when we have our activity fairs, what is Skills USA? What is HOSUP? We need to get kids into the building to showcase that, and so we hope to build some of that back, but then also creating some of those really clear pathways, maps, so they see what we offer, starting in middle school and then all the way through high school.
Thank you. Can I have a follow-up? So it is kind of related to parents, so I'm glad to hear Construct Tomorrow, my favorite event to go to. And how, is there going to be a parent component night of that, too? I know they started it a couple of years ago.
They, so they typically have, they run Construct Tomorrow for two days. During the day is primarily for high school students. Duluth gets our own day, and then all the other schools come on the other day. And so then in the evenings, it's more for post-high school students, and then we've also extended that to families. Come back and, okay, if your tent creator went today, come back and see what they did about putting on all the gear and walking across the beam, how they virtually drove a mining truck, how, you know, bricklayers are there, how did they get to do that? So yes, there should be a family component. It was originally scheduled for pretty early in February, and they just finally, they all agreed that they could pull it off in May, so it'll push up to me.
Christopher, can I?
Sure. Just to comment a little further on your question about, you know, making sure that people are aware. I think that Adele Wellens, our new communications officer, has been already really good at stepping in and telling the stories of Duluth Public Schools, and I think that the vision that you have for our articulated pathways is really incredible. And I've been part of a lot of different high school systems and really, like you said, to offer each of the pathways and something for everyone is really not very common. Even in a big school like this, many, many schools don't offer that. So I would say it's nice to be talking about things besides COVID and be seeing some of the vision for the future that you as a leader have. And I think that it's really important that we consider as a school board, as a community. I know the business community is really energized, and I know Jen and all of us have been working on that. And I think that if we, if we really put directly, you know, support behind this, particularly during this, you know, through the strategic plan or other areas, this is what can really engage kids and really keep kids focused on staying in their learning and having lifestyle-sustaining jobs that are important to them. So thank you for your vision, and thank you for your future work, Adele.
Yeah, yeah.
And helping to understand this. Member Satchel?
So where are our funding gaps with what we're doing now and what's needed?
So I don't know if there's gaps as much as lack of clarity. So we have a lump of money for career tech ed every year, and then we try to sort it out by program. What is each program going to need? Budget code-wise, multiple programs have been lumped together, and so they're tiptoeing around each other, trying to figure out how much money Don gets for wood, how much money Jen gets for ink and printing supplies. And so we as a group, and remember, these aren't all trained teachers, so working together along the way, identifying what they need for a supply budget. And then the other big gap, I pointed that way because it was on that side, sorry. Is that repair and replacement budget? That's probably our biggest one. So I have confidence that supply-wise, we'll be able to clean it all up and just be really clear. We probably need a little more money than we've been given, but we're close. It's that repair budget that I think is our last big gap. And then also the cleaner and clearer we can be about coding things, the better we can levy to also help fill that, so.
Do we prioritize some programs over others, or?
No, no, I don't think so.
Our maintenance and repairs, or how do we?
I think just having a maintenance and repair budget is going to be a great start. We don't, it just doesn't exist right now, and so when something happens, we have to go begging. And the process around repair and replacement is also something that we're working on cleaning up. We're working with facilities for when a lathe goes down or when we need electric run or whatever, who needs to be contacted and when, who needs approval? And then the same thing is when something breaks. Is it something we can fix in-house? Do we have to hire a contractor who hires that repair person? We're cleaning all that up just to be more efficient so that we're not without some necessary equipment for very long. So I'm pretty confident that we'll get there. Finance has been great about working with us and helping us shift money and create codes, and so I think we're in good shape.
And I think that with CFO Erickson not here, that's one of the things that we've talked about and that she has vision for as well. A lot of times, like you talk about, you know, the replacement cost of some of those, you know, those capital objects are huge, replacing a lathe, replacing ovens, lots and lots of money involved in that. And we haven't been in a financial place where we have clear replacement cycles, but I know that through building more sustainability of our budget and thinking about how we can build those cycles in is something that I know that she's working on so that she can help support the schools.
Simone in finance has spent a ton of time with us just separating out budget codes, creating new codes so that graphic arts has its own, watches its own bower. They're not worried about taking money out of this. They know what they have to work with for the year, and it's not a guessing game. So we've done a lot of work already, and I think that just being more clear and efficient is going to take us a long way, and then we can worry about how much money do we realistically need in the replacement budget or repair? Because equipment goes down all the time. It's not, it's not a unique thing. We're going to have repair costs every single year in these programs, and so just being proactive and being ready is.
Is there any legislative bills coming through that might be granting more money to districts that do CTE?
Not that I'm aware of at this time. I think there's other bigger things. I won't say bigger. But there's other things that are kind of a focus right now, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you all. February is CTE month, so we will send out some invitations for you to come tour both campuses. Typically during the school day is more fun, when students are actually here using those programs, so we will definitely be sending out an invitation for those. COVID numbers are coming down. You should feel okay coming here. But it's really fun to see students in action on those programs, so. I'm going to get to my daughter's basketball game.
Thank you again.
Thank you all.
Next, our next item is our presentation, Be Smart Secure Farm Storage Campaign. And I have Sarah Mickelson.
Mike Sell.
Mike Sell.
Yeah, it's both of them. I'll do whatever you want.
We're glad to have you here again, so we will be setting this up.
Yeah, perfect.
So while she's setting it, is there something in terms of introduction you want to?
I do. I was also going to say, like, I obviously was a lot more tolerant of uncomfortable chairs when I was in high school. So if anyone else needs, like, stand up and move around, like, I won't be offended if you move around. And Kayla, that looks like it's a little bit ahead, the slide that you have up on the screen. But while she's getting that all figured out, I just want to say hello to everybody. I am Sarah Mike Sell. My family and I live in the woodland neighborhood of Duluth, and my husband and I have two sons, a sophomore here at East, who's currently managing the basketball team downstairs and a fifth grader at Homecraft. I'm a volunteer with Be Smart for Kids. So Be Smart is an educational program whose goal is to reduce child firearm deaths and injuries, specifically those deaths and injuries that are due to kids getting unsupervised access to unlocked and loaded guns. This campaign is geared towards adults, both parents and non-parents, gun owners and non-gun owners. Be Smart leaves politics out of the conversation and focuses solely on what we all agree on, keeping kids safe. So Be Smart consists of multiple components, a well-designed website at besmartforkids.org, a PowerPoint presentation given by trained volunteer presenters, and various written and digital resources. Here in Duluth, we presented Be Smart at ECAB classes, state and local PTA meetings, pediatric departments at both healthcare organizations, and to members of the Duluth Police Department, in addition to tabling at various community health fairs and conferences. So I'm bringing this program forward to you tonight for two reasons. First is to educate. Second is to offer it as a tool to the district and others can use to communicate with parents and guardians about the importance of securely storing firearms. I'll begin by presenting the community Be Smart presentation. Afterwards, I'll provide you with suggestions on how district staff can routinely incorporate the Be Smart message into communications with parents and guardians. I'll also provide examples of how school districts across the country are using Be Smart as a proactive measure to help keep our students, staff, schools, and communities safe. So with that, I will begin. So first slide, thank you. Thank you for joining us here today. We'll be talking about Be Smart, a program that is developed to bring together parents and all adults concerned about kids' guns and safety. So next slide. So in the United States, firearms are the second-leading cause of death for children and the first-leading cause of death for black children. As this slide shows, more than 1,600 kids under the age of 18 are killed with guns in the United States every year. So that's an average of five kids a day. When children in America are killed with guns, majority of those deaths, or 53%, are homicides. That's nearly 900 children per year. Another 700 children die by firearm suicide each year, and 90 are unintentionally shot and killed. Next slide. We know that approximately 5.4 million children in the United States live in a household with at least one loaded and unlocked gun, and this number is likely increased in light of the surge of gun sales during the COVID-19 pandemic. While school shootings and mass shootings typically make the national headlines, the reality is that for children under the age of 13, gun homicides most frequently occur in the home. One study showed that nearly 90% of unintentional shooting deaths and injuries among children under age 15 occur in the home. What's more, we know that an incidence of gunfire on school grounds, up to 80% of shooters under the age of 18 obtain the gun or guns they used from their home or the homes of relatives or friends. I know this can be an emotional issue, and we all come from different walks of life. Many of you are parents. Some of you may be gun owners and some not. You may have personal experience with guns, and some of you may even have been impacted by gun violence. We believe that most gun owners want to be responsible gun owners, so we're here today to talk about what all of us, gun owners and non-gun owners alike, can do to make sure children don't have unsupervised access to guns. Next slide. So for now, let's leave politics at the door and agree on these three things. One, we all want kids to grow up happy and healthy. Two, we each have the right to make responsible decisions about how to protect our homes, families, and communities, including whether or not to have a gun in our home. Three, if we can prevent even one child death, gun death or injury, it is our responsibility to do so. So we're not here to talk about laws or policies, so let's set those aside. Next slide. I want to take a few minutes to talk specifically about what the consequences of unsecured guns look like. On this slide, you'll see just a few headlines from stories from across the country, although we know there are many incidents that go unreported. Some of you may remember from the news, the first story in the top left. In January of 2018, there was a school shooting in Kentucky at Marshall County High School. More than a dozen students were shot and wounded. Two of them, Bailey Holt and Preston Cope, were killed. The 16-year-old shooter had gained access to his stepfather's unsecured pistol from his bedroom. The next tragedy took place in May of 2018. A four-year A four-year-old boy from Louisa, Virginia, unintentionally shot his two-year-old brother Tyson after accessing an unsecured gun that was kept high in an upper cabinet. The next headline on the bottom left illustrates that when kids are looking to carry guns out of fear, easy access to guns can help facilitate that cycle of violence. Like 17-year-old Ziki of Jackson, Mississippi, who told the Jackson Free Press that some young people in this community carry guns out of fear of being robbed or shot, and believe that having a gun will allow them to defend themselves. Let me also point out our final story about 13-year-old Mikey from Brewster, New York. Mikey was a friendly and popular eighth grader. He was an expert bowler and an athlete, and he loved video games. In January of 2013, Mikey came home from school, took one of his father's unlocked and loaded guns, and shot himself. His family knew Mikey to be a happy kid, and they don't believe he planned to die that day. But it was at easy access to a loaded gun, Mikey made an impulsive decision, and tragically it became a fatal one. So all four of these stories show the fallout of when young people get their hands on unsecured guns. No story is quite the same, but all are tragic, and all are preventable. Next slide. It's important to remember that even if you are practicing secure storage, or if you don't have a gun in your home, you can't be sure about other homes. You can't be sure about how responsible other people are being. So that's where our Be Smart program becomes helpful. What can we do? We can learn to be smart. Next slide. Let's start with the S, secure your guns in homes and vehicles. 13 million households with children contain at least one gun. And the majority of children in gun-owning households know where the gun is stored. And we already know that an incidence of gunfire on school grounds, the majority of shooters under the age of 18 obtained the gun from their home or the home of relatives or friends, like the tragedy that unfolded at Marshall County High School in Kentucky that we touched on earlier. So what do I mean by securing guns? Guns should be stored locked and unloaded with ammunition stored separately. Hiding a gun is not securing a gun, and we know that can lead to tragedy. We talked about the four-year-old Virginia boy who unintentionally shot his two-year-old brother after accessing an unsecured gun that was just stored high in an upper cabinet. And remember Ziki from Mississippi, who spoke of the complicated safety reasons that push some teens to want a gun? Keep in mind that kids may feel a variety of emotions about guns, from curiosity to fascination to fear. As adults, it is our responsibility to prevent easy access to guns. Research also finds that secure storage is associated with a decreased risk of firearm suicide and unintentional firearm injury among children. One study showed that households that locked both firearms and ammunition had a 78% lower risk of self-inflicted firearm injuries among children and teenagers, and 85% lower risk of unintentional firearm injuries. Some commonly used secure storage practices include using a cable lock, a lockbox, or a firearm safe, as well as storing firearms unloaded with ammunition stored separately. Unsecured guns also contribute to a staggering number of guns stolen every year. An estimated 380,000 guns are stolen from private gun owners every year, and gun owners are three times more likely to have a gun stolen if they carried a gun in the last month. Research also suggests that nearly one quarter of stolen guns are taken from cars. So storing a gun in the glove compartment or underneath the car seat is not considered secure storage. Next slide. M is modeling responsible behavior. Every law-abiding adult has the right to decide whether or not to have a gun in their home. But you can't rely on curious kids not to find that gun. As we saw on the slide before, one study showed the majority of children are aware of where their parents store their guns, and more than one-third reported handling their parents' guns, many doing so without the knowledge of their parents. Nearly a quarter of parents did not know that their children had handled the gun in their house. It's always an adult's responsibility to prevent unauthorized access to guns, not a curious child's responsibility to avoid them. Talk to your kids about gun safety, but remember, that's a precaution and not a guarantee. One study found that young children who go through a week-long gun safety training are just as likely as children with no training to approach or play with a handgun when they find one. Modeling responsible behavior means that smart adults make sure that kids don't have the opportunity to access guns. That said, you can't control the environment your child is in all the time. So you should teach them not to touch a gun if they come across one, real or pretend, and give them the tools to get out of a dangerous situation and to alert an adult. As an adult, it's our responsibility to do everything we can to prevent them from getting into a dangerous situation to begin with. Next slide. As we've mentioned, there are approximately 5.4 million children in the United States living in a household with at least one loaded and unlocked gun. That's why you need to ask about firearms in other homes your child visits. That's the A in SMART. For us parents and caretakers in the room, we're used to asking about basic safety questions before letting our kids go to friends or other homes. We ask about allergies, if they need a helmet if they're going to be riding on wheels, is there screen time restrictions? What adults are going to be there to supervise? Next slide. Asking about guns in the home should be as natural as asking about any other safety issue, but it can be awkward at first. So try making it part of your general safety conversation. You might try asking via email or text if you're uncomfortable at first. Next slide. Let's talk about recognizing the role of guns in suicide, the R. Access to a gun can mean the difference between life and death. We saw that in Mikey's story. As our children get older, you may need to consider taking another look at your storage methods. If you've been using a simple cable lock, you may want to think about getting a gun safe. We all know how curious children can be, so as they get older and more resourceful, we need to act accordingly. Also, if you know your loved one of any age is in distress, you might want to consider temporarily removing a gun from your home. Take this information into consideration. Most people who attempt suicide do not die unless they use a gun. In fact, 90% of suicide attempts with a gun result in death, and that's a much higher fatality rate than any other means of self-harm. This contributes to the fact that nearly 40% of child suicides involve a gun. If you consider temporarily removing a gun from your home, how can you do that? Where can you bring it? I consulted with the Duluth Police Department, and their suggestions are to temporarily store your guns in the home of a friend or family member. To manage a risk for that friend or family member, you should lock any guns that you transfer and not provide the key or code. Next slide. The National Youth Survey conducted by the CDC showed that 17% of high school students surveyed had seriously considered attempting suicide within the last year. One study showed that 41% of adolescents in gun-owning households report having easy access to the guns in their homes. As we discussed earlier, research shows that secure firearm storage is associated with a decreased risk of child firearm suicide. Next slide. If you need it, we have some resources available for you on this slide. Next slide. T in SMART is tell, that's the power of being smart. We have heard from people that because of Be Smart, they now know to ask about the presence of guns before their children go to other people's homes, that they have talked to family members about guns in homes when they have recognized the role of guns in suicide, and that gun owners are modeling responsible behavior as a direct result of Be Smart. So who can you tell to be smart today? Next slide. And one last time, a smart adult secures all guns in homes and vehicles, models responsible behavior around guns, asks about unsecured guns in other homes, recognizes the role of guns in suicide, and tells their peers to be smart. So that's what is the community presentation of Be Smart. I thank you for paying attention and listening. Before I talk about ways that the school district can use Be Smart to prevent tragedies, I want to thank you. The Duluth ISD 709 School Board was the first school board in the state to recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day through a resolution. That was in 2019, and you have recognized it every year since then. So thank you to the board, to administration, both past and present, and to staff. Part of that resolution states, and I believe there's some attachments in your reminders for tonight, part of that resolution states, quote, "We renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe," end quote. The Duluth School District has already shared Be Smart information with parents and guardians and staff a handful of times. All have been in reaction to an incident in the school. A realistic-looking pellet gun brought to an elementary school, ammunition being found in a locker, a vague threat on social media, and also after terrifying school shootings in other places. I applaud the district in pushing secure firearm storage information out to parents and guardians after events like these. I now challenge the district to look at more proactive ways to communicate this information. Allow me to recommend that you follow in the footsteps of Lake Oswego School District in Lake Oswego, Oregon. They have updated their website to include information about secure storage of firearms. You can also follow the lead of Fairfax County Public Schools in the state of Virginia. Last year, the school board spent a portion of the meeting discussing the state's gun storage laws. The superintendent then sent home an informational advisory to parents about their legal obligation to safely secure any firearms in their homes. You can also do what the Los Angeles United School District and the Phoenix Union High School District do. Every year, with school registration forms, parents must acknowledge receipt of secure storage information. As of the end of December 2021, more than 2 million students across the country attend school in a district that requires schools to educate parents about the critical importance of secure firearm storage. It would be great if we could add Duluth Public School students to that number. If ISD 709 has a desire and the bandwidth, may I also suggest that you be inspired by the Midlands area south of Carolina. There, 27 separate community organizations, including eight school districts, nine law enforcement agencies, and eight healthcare organizations form the coalition. Their purpose is to work together to reduce firearm-related injuries and deaths by educating parents and other adults on the principles of Be Smart and by helping eliminate the barriers to secure firearm storage among gun owners. In their partnership agreement, which you have a copy of, each agency has obligations that can be met at no or low cost and only if funding is available. The critical component of this partnership is that credible messengers, schools, law enforcement, and healthcare organizations commit to sharing secure firearm storage information regularly and routinely. I have already been part of conversations with Mr. Bonds, the DPD, and other school districts, and a local healthcare organization. And I believe a coalition with a shared goal of preventing gun deaths and injuries can be made a reality in our community. In fact, just yesterday, the Duluth Police Department shared Be Smart information and resources on their social media pages. Chief Tuscan gave an interview with a local news station this afternoon about the vital importance of securely storing firearms. You have supportive and willing partners, right, and collaborate on this. When it comes to our children's safety, we are all in this together. So with that, I thank you for what you do for our kids every day, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Beck?
No, I'd just like to say thank you for coming tonight and again, sharing such great information on such an important topic. And I know that we have done some things in the past, but I think that it's always good to think about what can those next steps look like. And I appreciate those really thoughtful and worthwhile suggestions of what we might consider for next steps. And I know that Mr. Bonds and others on our team will take that deep to heart and consider how we might consider moving forward.
I would just like to add thank you for the presentation, Sarah. And I really like the succinct acronym of Be Smart. And I mean, they're all really important, but I really like just the reminder to, just the way that it normalizes asking, because I think that's huge for parents, and a lot of times they feel uncomfortable. So thank you for your work on this in our community and for being here.
Amber Walker?
Thank you. And Sarah, I remember when you brought this resolution to us back in 2019 and very much supporting it then. And, you know, I know there's been other efforts. Over the years, I've been a parent in the district, and I, you know, remember, it was called Be Ask at that time, and I was a new parent in the district of young kids, and I didn't know anybody, and it was hard to ask, but it was an important piece. So I really appreciate how this presentation really captured so many aspects of it. I certainly would love to see us continue looking at some of the ways other school districts have taken action and to build on what we've started this year in particular. And so I support any efforts to our staff leaders, whether it's to move into a coalition or some of these other steps with our own website, et cetera. So thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber Sandel?
Yeah, just thank you, Sarah, for this presentation. It was really good. Yeah, this is so important. Just real quick, the resolution that we passed that day, where orange and, I forget the name for it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, National Gun Violence Awareness Day is what you recognize. Where are you at?
What day is that again? Just coming up this spring?
It's the first full weekend in June.
First full weekend. Okay. And that's something we put on the website. We, I know we talk about it, I think, in our forum, and we're going to, and hopefully we can do more to promote that.
Continue.
And we look forward with maybe some other actions here, too.
I agree. We're going to go to our next presentation. It's going to be presented by Bart Smith, our technology manager, and it's a technology report.
Yeah, thank you. This report is spanning some of December and January, from actually Christmas to the 23rd of January. So it's kind of in between, so it's not directly in the month. To start off with cybersecurity, we received 1.1 million emails. About 52,000 of those emails were rejected because they're either identified as spam, phishing, spoofing. And we had zero emails identified as malware. Account information, we have over 10,000 accounts between staff and our students, 23 terabytes of storage their staff instance are using. During that time, we had 278 suspicious login attempts. And that could be anywhere from in the U.S. or overseas. We did get some of those. This month, again, we had 17 high severity incidents that were blocked by Google Drive. And that's the credit cards, social security numbers, and stuff like that. It identified those, and someone was trying to share that out, and we blocked those. Does E-Rate bid? Actually, I have an update on that. We have a new bid out there. It's bid 1,300. It's pretty much for the same stuff, but I forgot some key components of the first bid after reviewing the bids. So it's going back out, so we'll not be going to the board until March or beginning. Technology Help Desk tickets for December 25th through January 23rd. 299 new tickets. 431 tickets were resolved, 371 tickets remain unresolved. The projects we have, we're still working with CDWG. Our wireless site survey's on hold because of COVID numbers. We felt that was a safety concern for our schools and staff. CDWG is helping us with our cybersecurity, playbooks and stuff like that. Right now, we are working at ordine. We started this week with site support in one of their labs, imaging computers. And I know the CTE staff are here, looking for those new desktops, and that's part of those, what they're going to be doing. I have to thank Kina for letting us use that. I have to thank Kina for letting us use that lab. It's been really helpful. The program, we have moves out of Hox, uh, because we, we just finished up all the moves. Uh, my team's been working on them since prior to the startup, so my team just finished up with Garfield as well as, uh, the tech center.
Can I, can I ask what we're doing at Garfield? I've seen it come up a number of times, and I, I kind of know the building type, but I, I thought it was just kind of a storage place, but are we actually?
Yeah, we have staff down there, uh, multiple staff. We always had, uh, some, the utility crew down there, but now we have, uh, office staff. So we have phones, uh, computers, printers, uh, wireless access points.
Is this staff that were relocated out of Hox?
Uh, they were at the facilities location on, on top of the hill, like Dave Myers down there, Matt Johnson's down there, um, the lock shop, you know, uh, like the shops, they're all down there now. So we had to set them up with services. So we finished that one up, uh, this week, as well as the tech center, AEO, ALC on there. That ends my report.
What have, have we been doing for AEO and, um, A- ALC up to now in the tech village? I mean, I know they must have need some role support, especially with, um, with being, you know, with half the time they're, they're using their one-to-one devices.
Well, we had for, uh, the tech center as well as the Arvin Building, we gave them hotspots. So we gave, I think we had 30 some hotspots for, uh, the tech center, for Nate and his team down there and their students to use. Uh, now we're gonna be, they're all on our network, so they'll be pulling those back.
Thank you.
Amber Sandel?
Uh, yeah, real quick, Bart, um, the unresolved Help Desk tickets, are they of a, a certain nature or is it just kind of manpower getting around?
Uh, right now, I think we have 70 Chromebook repairs on there, uh, and that's just, just our normal workload. I don't think that many tickets, you know, through the year.
What's your, what's the staff in our tech? You know, how many workers are you, are in our tech?
Uh, I wanna say there's 11.
Okay.
Your first is there?
We just actually hired a field tech person or a desktop support person, Adam. Uh, so he just started this week, so he's chatting with some of their other people, and he's actually out at Orgene up and down. So that'll help out with those, uh, site tickets, you know, because they'll have one more person there.
Okay. Amber Law, where can?
Yeah, that is actually gonna be my question. Are they full-time?
They are full-time.
Okay. Well, Bart, you're my hero. You've been my hero for, it's amazing the work that, you know, you have done, especially at the pandemic level for, for us as a board as well as just across the district, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. And our next item is a recognition for Myers Wilkins and receiving of the Full Service Community Grant. You want to stay there? That's, that's, wherever you like. That's perfect. So as you know, last week, um, the press release went out, and there was some communication regarding the receiving of the grant, and so we're really excited and proud of, uh, the opportunity that this $480,000 will provide to continue the expansion of community schools at Myers Wilkins. So we have Kelsey here, and she's going to introduce, um...
Caitlin.
Caitlin. I was gonna say Caitlin, and, um, they're gonna give you some information related to, um, community schools and where we are at this point in time, so Kelsey, Caitlin.
Great, thank you. Hi, everyone, I'm Kelsey Ganser, I'm the Executive Director of the Duluth Community School Collaborative, and this is Caitlin Smith, that's the site coordinator of at Myers Wilkins. And, uh, yeah, we, we're from the Duluth Community School Collaborative, we're a nonprofit that provides full-service community schools, partners with the district at Myers Wilkins, Lincoln Park Middle School, and Denville High School. We've been at Myers Wilkins for over 20 years, and so this was really exciting for us to receive this grant. It was a competitive grant process with American Rescue Plan funding that came from the state, and we had about a month to apply once it came out. By the time we coordinated everything with principals of the district and got everyone on board, we had about two weeks to get it together, and, um, so it was a huge effort, you know, props to all of our staff who's really worked hard to get that grant in and, and worked with the school to, um, get all the pieces together. And we were the only school in the state to receive an expansion grant, meaning that we already had a full-service community school model at the school, and we were just expanding what we were doing and making those services more robust. There were 12 other schools that received the grant, but they were all startup sites in the state, so we were really proud of that, to be able to receive, um, that funding from, from MBE. The full-service community school model is based off of four pillars. Two of the pillars are kind of how we do the work, and so that's collaborative leadership and family and community engagement, and then the other two pillars are really what we do, and so that's, um, expanded and rich learning time, and so, and the Duluth school does looks like after-school programming and summer school programming and working to bring activities into the school day, and then, um, enrich, or support services, which kind of wrap around services. And so we've been working on efforts for that, you know, we've had conversations with, uh, school-based health centers, we've been talking with children's dental services to see how we can get them back in the district right now, and, um, working on bringing food resources into the school day, and so, uh, and then not just for the students too, but for their families as well. We're in the process of hopefully very soon posting a position for our community health coordinator as well, that will be able to give families access to medical appointments and, and support some of those things. Let's see, what else is in this, Caitlin? Yeah, we're just excited. I mean, we're really excited about this grant. I feel like it's, uh, you know, a lot of the work that, um, Amy Warden at Myers Wilkins has done and to build that team and, and invite us in, we're really grateful for that relationship and to be able to work with them, and, um, I'm just looking forward to bringing people in the schools. We know that students and families and community are the greatest assets that we have, and so we're just really fortunate to be the ones to lift all of those things up. And I'll pass it to Caitlin, who's talked a little bit more about what she does at, at Myers.
Yeah, hi, I'm Caitlin Smith. Um, I'm new to the role. I was hired in September, but I've been working in, uh, the central hillside of Duluth for six years, and in that time, I've just grown extremely passionate about the community and about the families and the people who work and live, um, in the community. So, uh, my, I own children and teen youth programming at NYAS, uh, in Washington Center, and, um, I've just grown to love and to know, uh, the community and, and that it's filled with amazing people with beautiful stories of strength and resilience. I'm just gonna read for my paper because I'm just in that spot right now. Many of these stories have, uh, have gone unheard and their voices marginalized, um, and we know that the work of community schools is to lift those voices, um, and that's work that I'm really excited to do because I'm so passionate about this community. I hope to make our school a place where people who grew up not being like schools are a place for them, that they can come and feel welcomed, um, honored, and respected. And this might help us do that, uh, by supporting our after-school program we're launching next week after quite a delay because of staffing and busing issues, as we all know this year. Students were told last year, like, what, what they would like to do in basketball was like the big, the big thing, and so we're like, all right, we'll, we'll roll with that. So we're, um, we're partnering, you know, with some local nonprofits, uh, mental space makers to offer a robust program that's aligned with our school initiatives for, um, behavior and for attendance, um, to help, you know, we're really targeting students to help with engagement, uh, using this enrichment opportunity as, you know, an engagement and attendance boost and be positive behavior boost strategy. And the other thing that, you know, I'm really excited for is a big part of community school model is having leadership teams and having all stakeholders in those leadership teams, and that's something I'm really passionate about, is bringing people to the table who haven't maybe necessarily been brought to the table before. You know, hopefully kids, definitely parents and other, you know, key stakeholders in our community to really make sure that our school is, is the hub of its community and really representing the people that it serves. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're excited. Thank you for, and thanks for the, the local, um, the local media that picked up this story too and, and really helped our community see, you know, that, um, we've got an opportunity here that is gonna really change lives and give opportunities.
Amber Law, where can?
Yeah, I, I thank you too, both of you, and, um, just a quick question, so the, the dollars, uh, we received are just gonna be used for Myers Wilkins, right? I, I, I thought, I got that out of the report, but...
The one, the one piece that will be not just for Myers Wilkins, um, one of the requirements of the grant was if you have three sites in a district that you would create a district site leadership team similar to what Caitlin was describing at the site level, and so, um, that's something that Assistant Superintendent Bonds and I will be working on. We're going forward, putting that team together, community members, parents, um, other people from the district to be able to look at that full-service community school model from the district perspective. Uh, that's really not uncommon for districts that have full-service community schools to just be in a select school that that does actually norm, to have it not be district-wide. And I still think it's been shown to be an effective district strategy using those individual school sites and kind of learning that, so, you know, bringing community members in, what they want, testing things out in that school site, and then really effective strategies bringing those across the district to be built. Yeah, so that's the one element that's not just Myers Wilkins, but otherwise, pretty much.
Excellent, excellent. You know, and I, I'm so excited. Um, I would love the opportunity, uh, and I'd be glad to arrange it, to bring Representative Mary Murphy to, to speak, because she has been a huge advocate for community schools since the get-go, so, um, I would love to work with, um, our staff to get her there to see, you know, especially with this, this new grant as well, but, and things opening up a little bit more to bring people in. So thank you again. I love community schools.
Amber Sandel?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say thank you so much for all your work that you do in our community and with our young people. I'm a huge supporter of our, uh, Co- Community Schools Collaborative, and just thank you for all the work that you did on this grant. I know how hard it is to work on these grants, especially when you have one month and then you spent two weeks collaborating and getting all the other moving pieces together. So just kudos to you, that is a huge accomplishment, and then just to be the only school in the whole state to get an expansion, which I also know is hard, because everyone likes to hear new, new projects. So excellent work, and thank you for, that's so impactful for our students, so.
Thank you. I'll give it actually another little to our, our, the staff for that. We actually applied for all three sites, because we could, a district could apply to three, so the amount of work that went into it was, was...
Huge, and it was in September.
Yes, yes.
November, September.
It was, it was time to do it too, and trying to get everything started for the school year, but, um, yeah, we were really happy that we could, and I think that's really one of the benefits of us being a nonprofit supporting the school, is just being able to offer some of that support in different ways than if we were just part of the district, and so having that partnership has been a benefit, and that is just one of them, that our staff could just do a little bit of a different role during that time, and, yeah.
Put our efforts in.
Put, yeah, make it happen. And so we didn't know who was awarded the grant when we first got it, so we were a little bit sad, like, oh, man, we just got one, but then we found out, you know, there's only 13 in the state, and then, then later we found out we're the only one to get an expansion, so we stopped being too sad about it. We would have loved to have gotten it for all three sites.
Yeah, you should be really proud. Thank you so much.
I was just gonna say as well how proud we are to partner with you and that, uh, really when we think about the work being done in our community schools, that some of, some of the most important work we have going on in the district and community, it's serving kids, serving families, serving everybody in such holistic ways. I just think the nature of the programming and also the nature of the people working within it are, are just a beacon to the rest of the community, so thank you for your, your hard work, and thank you for what you're doing for the, the children and families at Duluth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for making it out all the way to the end. We're sorry about that, but...
Well, anyway, they said we had to save up to last, we're the best.
Oh, that's right. You're right. Plus, I'm sure it was really interesting to listen to all the presentations.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was.
It really was.
And I, I thought Sarah wants to partner with you guys, really, I was just gonna say.
We're gonna partner with everyone, we like to partner. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, we have one other item under "other," is something I wanted to bring out briefly, and it's something we, I talked about with your local during my weekly meeting today, and I reminded the board, um, a couple weeks ago at one of our prior meetings, that on, February 15th, I will not be in Duluth. There, uh, the, the board had wanted me as one of my goals to participate in the, uh, Urban Superintendents Academy, and that is a mandatory in-person, uh, training on that day, that's something I've been going through all, all year. Considering everything we have going on and things that, that might be presented or things that people want to have shared, just wanted to put it out there, if there was a preference for the board to move the, the Tuesday meeting to Monday, that would be a possibility. It is Valentine's Day for people who might have something going on as well though, so I want to keep that in mind as well, but just thought I'd put it out there in case there was an interest, or, uh, if people wanted to give input on, on any preference there.
And, you know, we could, we've done do the polls before, we, we could...
Do that as well.
Put a poll out to board members and say, you know, can you, would, would you be able to attend the February 14th, 6:30 board meeting, or would you prefer to keep it on the same date?
And, um...
Everybody, you know, everybody has a calendar, and it's really important, we all have, um, things, so I, I, I think that we have capable leaders that we can go forward with a board meeting on February 15th, but yet, we are at a crucial point in many items coming up towards this board, and, um, I would hate to, not to, to get to the two days or three days before and realize that it's, it's vital that we are together as a full board with our superintendent as our voice and, and director as well, so not to put any pressure on him, but if you, you know, he, he doesn't leave until Tuesday morning, the 15th, so a 14th could work, and, um...
So we can put that out as a do the poll?
Yeah.
Amber Sandel?
What problem does that create for the community in terms of, they change in that date? Because of, because of, there's, there's kind of this consistency...
Yeah, yeah, I hear you.
Where, where our community knows that, that's when it's gonna happen.
We have changed our, our dates in the past.
Um, I would just be cautious of Kathy's, uh, city council schedule. She usually has meetings on Mondays.
Okay.
City Council for Kathy. That was why we kind of avoided some Mondays for other times. Yeah, I, I don't think there's, um, I mean, I think we can go forward with, with a Tuesday, but John just wanted to kind of share that with each other, and, and you're right, the community, you know, expects a certain day and kind of looks for it, but...
With Assistant Superintendent Bonds either to deliver the superintendent's report?
Yes, I, I would still do that.
And the superintendent, you know, and John can't visit with us remotely because one of the bigger, one of the bigger conferences during the same time.
Four to eight during that, that, that event, so...
Well, I, I've gotten a number of inquiries about, um, the location since we were, um, at the end of the last meeting, we, we, it was thrown out there that, you know, do we want to stay at Denville, or do we want to go somewhere else, or come here, or whatever, and, and so I've had at least four people reach out to me and just to confirm the location on Tuesday already, so if we go and change the date, that, that might be, throw even more people...
I was just putting it out there just because I know that, given all the circumstances, I wanted to make sure that, that, um, if, if the board felt strongly that I was there, I've known for six months I can't be there.
Amber Law, where can?
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, I, I just came off of a three-hour training last night with the School Board Association for, uh, Chair and Vice Chair and, uh, for Leadership, and, um, uh, there was this topic about, uh, if you need to change a meeting, and I guess a couple things. I, I, I think, um, uh, we do need to think about the community, uh, but we won't be giving the community enough time. What's, what's really important though is that this meeting is for us, so we need to think about, you know, who we need to have at the table or who we want at the table, and so I guess, um, in terms of thinking about the purpose of our monthly meeting is that it's, it's who we have at the table, uh, and, uh, letting the public know, uh, we can do that, uh, and, and it would not be the first time if we decide as a, a board to, to change it, that we've changed it for lots of different reasons. So I'm not going either way, I'm just saying, I'm coming out of my training, I, I, I want to just kind of remind us, the purpose of the meeting is for us as a board to feel we have the people at the table we need to do our board work. to feel we have the people at the table we need to do our board work.
And a media blitz could occur, so we could put a media blitz out there and make sure one is well...
Isn't it already kind of on an off week? Because we moved it up a week because of our winter break. So, it's...
No, we moved it back.
Yeah, yeah. We moved, yeah, we moved it back.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
So, would you like us, Chair, to get back to you if we have some thoughts on it? Or how do you want us to move forward? Because, you know, we, Kelly, we have two more members that aren't...
I think that we asked Executive Secretary Paquette to put out a doodle poll to see if you're available, and then leave a, leave a section on the survey. I like Google Forms for that reason, because you can leave a comment thing, and then you can give some input as to either why or why not. You wouldn't see that movement, and that would give superintendent and a guideline. A Google Form that says, are you available on the 14th? Because that's one of the first things, is if you've got other conflicts, well...
And I did mention the conflict a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
But just given, given different circumstances evolving, I just want to make sure that we're responsive to whatever the board prefers.
So, we will need to kind of do this very quickly, turn around, and walk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.